Councilmember Cormac.
Here.
Councilmember DeBois.
Here.
Mayor Filseth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fein.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Six present. So, we've got five candidates and we haven't had a meeting in here, I don't think, ever. So, the microphones work just like they do in the chambers, so you just want to make sure to press the button when you talk and it will illuminate green and then just turn it off when you're done. And then I'll hold the applicants back in case you want to do some discussion and let you know when you're ready. You can let me know when you're ready for the next applicant. So, we've got Stephen Eichler at 6:00 PM. He's here and ready for you.
All right.
Bring him in.
You ready? I want to see everything.
Mr. Eichler?
Sure.
I'm going to sit down to dinner tonight.
So, you can come right in this spot here.
Yes.
The microphone's live here.
Okay.
So, just make sure to speak into the front part of it.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome. Thanks for coming in and sorry for the sort of the tribunal layout here. We never use this room, okay? Usually, we sit around a table and it's pretty informal, so this is a new experience for us, too. Anyway, thank you for applying. We're going to give you a couple of minutes to talk about sort of your interest in this and why and background a little bit and then we're going to ask all kinds of hard questions. And then, we're going to talk about you. So, please proceed.
So, as you know, my name is Stephen Eichler. I am a native Californian, born and raised in, or born in Palo Alto, actually, raised in mostly Menlo Park and Atherton. So, I've been around the area for most of my life. I have a degree in architecture from Cal. I haven't used it very much, I should say, other than my own projects and trying to do a kitchen and bath business back in 2005, 2006 to 2008, which was inappropriately timed to the economic markets, but so be it. It was a good learning experience. Most of my work has been in financial and business administration, actually. I work with a lot of small business clients today, helping them do various things on their business from capital improvements to finance and accounting and operational activities. One of the projects that I've been working on for the past three years has been a publicly-funded project, or actually, I say, a number of publicly-funded projects by OEWD in the city and county of San Francisco, specifically in the Bayview. And so, I work with this public money to help doing commercial tenant improvements or facade improvements and that are being provided to the small business owners on Third Street primarily. And it's been very interesting to do that and work through the city process and working with a completely different city, I think, than the ones that we have down on the peninsula. So, anyway, I'll stop there.
Who would like to go first?
I'd like to.
Go ahead.
So...
Greetings. Thank you for...
Oh, thank you.
They don't move?
They do. So, as I said, thanks for applying. I appreciate it. One of the things you really emphasize and by way of giving your current history, what you're saying is you're not currently practicing architecture, correct?
Yeah.
You have done that in the past. But you speak a lot about progress, preservation. You mentioned preservation before that. Say a little more about that because you've really emphasized it.
So, I think why I emphasize that is I think there's a lot of building that goes on that disregards the built landscape, if you will, and it disregards history and things that are important about what has been in the past. And I think it's frankly important to at least be sensitive to those issues. I realize that people own property and own buildings and want to do what they want to do, as is the American way. But I do think that if there's a way to encourage, inspire, sort of reflection upon the character of the streetscape in this case and in commercial space or even in residential space and be sensitive to what that means and not just to simply cavalierly discard it.
Good. Thank you.
Tom.
Two questions. So, an interesting last name. I think you're related to the famous architect.
That's my grandfather.
Right. And could you tell us a little bit about, I don't know, anything that he shared with you about architecture and then also kind of what you're doing specifically? We talked about facades currently.
Sure. So, first of all, I think one of the things, and I don't want to go into a big history lesson, I do museum exhibits on my grandfather, by the way, but I don't want to make that about, or make this about that. My grandfather was not an architect. My grandfather was a builder and a developer and he was smart enough to know that he needed to hire talented architects to do what he did. He was focused on the product, packaging the product, and delivering it to the masses. And the key thing to that, as we all know and read about, is he did it in a manner that was both affordable and equal, meaning that anybody had accessibility to the product. And actually, that's a very paramount thing to me. And if I could translate that a little bit, if you don't mind, and give me some latitude, to looking at projects that come online in any city, community, or whatever, I really think the projects need to express and allow for diversity and inclusion and, again, not just be, "This is my thing and this is the way I want it and that's just the way it is." Tom, your other question was...
About the facade work you're doing.
The facade work I'm doing. You know, for me, that work is about giving back. I mean, it's not my money, admittedly, but at least what I'm doing and what I contribute to the process is helping these small business owners to do what they need to do to thrive. And that's really a fun thing to do, quite honestly. These are really, really small business owners, struggling to make a living and struggling to do what they do, as you know, in an expensive area, regardless if it's in the Bayview or University Avenue.
I guess I'm not really clear what you're doing. Like, are they...
So, I do the compliance. I help them get contractors. I help them get all the work done that they need to get done to fulfill the grant requirements and receive the money to pay for the work that they're getting done to improve their business.
Adrian.
Thank you for applying. Glad you touched on some of those things. I remember learning about some of the Unsonian principles and, you know, this like new North America kind of stuff your grandfather worked on, so that's cool. One interesting thing is we do have these Eichler guidelines, design guidelines, and a few others across the city, but they are guidelines, right? They're not like rules set in stone. And how would you approach that on the ARB that, you know, sometimes you're trying to say, "This is what the guidelines is not, maybe these principles aren't applicable here"? Can you just walk me through that a little bit?
Absolutely. And I'm not sure if you're asking me specifically with regards to Eichlers.
No, no, no.
Okay. Because that's, you know, something I've given a lot of thought to and I don't know that I have a clear answer on, but it is something that I've given a lot of thought to. But how do you do that? It's a balancing act. We all know that. It's how to come across, not how to be impartial while teasing out some of the elements that is the mission of the city, which I think comes out through the council, right, and says, "This is what we believe the city is and needs to be for the future," and working with the constituents, in this case, the architect, the building owners, and really teasing out how to, again, come up with an aesthetic solution that is not sort of in your face, "This is what I want to do," that is compassionate to its neighbors and its community, frankly. And I don't think there's any one way to do that. I mean, I think it's a conversation.
Yep. Thank you.
So, in what you do, you must run into circumstances where you've got a bunch of people involved and they don't all agree on what the right thing to do is. So, how do you resolve that in this kind of context?
Conflict resolution has a lot to do with compromise. So, it's really finding out and learning and listening to what are the important issues and what is important to each constituent and then trying to weigh and help them understand if Party A sees their importance as one thing and Party B sees it as another, to help them have a meeting of the minds to see how they can compromise on those issues and, you know, give and take, basically. It's a bottom line of give and take in that matter. And again, I wish I could tell you there's a one right answer, but there really isn't because every situation is unique.
So, I live in an Eichler and I mostly love it, many things about it and the things that are not great about it, some of them. We covered in our Eichler Design Guidelines. But I actually would be because you're a member of the family and you've worked for an organization interested in your thoughts on our Eichler Design Guidelines and the extent to which they should be mandatory, voluntary.
Well, I'm sure, as you know, and having gone through the process, there are other communities that have done these. Cupertino, there's a small tract down there, there's Marin County, they all have a variety of different things. If I could wave a magic wand, right, almost all of Eichler homes had CCNRs, okay, number one. And number two, yes, they mostly got abandoned. I mean, in the sense that nobody really cared and fed them over the years. And that has made for a difficult conversation over the years amongst homeowners because, you know, they feel that the cities or the counties ought to step up and help them navigate that CCNR. Again, the challenge for me sometimes is that there are some, albeit Eichlers, just like any other home, that have not been cared for and have not been, that have been fed and maintained and all that. So, the question comes down to in these economic times, and is, what's the path, the appropriate path, to its resolution? Is it scraping the land and starting over? Maybe. Maybe it is. But do the guidelines then say or help to navigate the, again, I'll use the conflict, the conflict resolution around being sensitive to the neighborhood, being, understanding and appreciative to what was done there, what the history is, how it evolved, and not simply sticking up a Victorian home in the middle of a contemporary neighborhood? I mean, I think that's the challenge on how to interpret design guidelines.
Thank you.
Real quick, because we're almost out of time.
Oops.
In that case, I'll just say, "Thank you for applying."
Okay. So, we're about out of the time. We'll probably give you 30 seconds if there's anything else you want to say.
Okay. So, again, I thank you for having me here. I actually, if you may have known, that I applied, I don't know, three years ago, I think, and I just realized when I was getting to this point that I just didn't have the bandwidth to do it. But I've always been interested and, as you can see, I touch it in San Francisco, I touch it in other areas. I enjoy working with city government and I enjoy working with the process that city government represents. So, this would be really an interesting opportunity to blend that with architecture and, to some extent, conflict resolution with just sort of navigating all the elements that go into what the future looks like in terms of architecture and building.
I'll ask curiosity, why Palo Alto? You live in Menlo Park or not?
Palo Alto, I don't think has an ARB.
Menlo Park.
Menlo Park, sorry. Menlo Park, sorry. Apologies. Yeah, I don't think they have an ARB that I'm aware of. I mean, it's, there are other aspects of Menlo Park that I have looked at, absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you very much for applying. Thank you for coming in tonight and spending summer evening with us.
Thank you very much.
And, yeah.
Okay.
Now, we're going to talk about you.
Thanks.
So, you can go ahead and have a seat right here. And Grace, you can follow me. This is Grace Lee.
Hi, welcome.
Hello.
Hi. Thank you for applying and for joining us tonight.
Sure.
And sorry about the sort of the tribunal format here. We don't, we usually use one of the other rooms and it's, everybody sits around a table and does, so this is a little new for us, too. But anyway, so thank you for applying. We've got 10 minutes and what we'd like you to do, if you could, is take a minute or two and sort of explain your interest in this and sort of some of your background and how that fits. And then, we're going to ask you all kinds of arcane questions, right? Not really. And then, later, we're going to talk about you.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for meeting with me today. I think the last time I was in this room was in 2005. It was for an Architecture Review Board interview. And here we are, almost 15 years later. I'm delighted to, you know, meet you all and talk about the Architecture Review Board. I moved to Palo Alto and I think it was 2003 from San Francisco. It's a pleasure to live here, to be in the community. My background is in architecture and planning and for about 15 years, I was dividing my time and practice in offices, Oakland, San Francisco, Palo Alto. But during that time, I always was teaching. And so, you know, I've always been at that crossroads of architectural education as well as, you know, being a practitioner in design. My graduate work was at Berkeley and, you know, one of the first jobs that I took on was working with a professor who became a mentor and we started working on urban design projects. This work took us to Macon, Georgia, and to Richmond in the East Bay, doing a lot of community projects. It was a lot of landscape architecture and small-scale urban design projects. I would say the highlights in my work has been working with cities as a consultant in urban design, community design. In Palo Alto, I've worked with Tony Carrasco here in Palo Alto and our projects were everything from looking at sites in East Palo Alto and thinking about housing and with a mix of uses that might also have a commercial aspect to, you know, some retrofits, seismic retrofits, kind of the bread and butter, shells, you know, just Reposados just down the street there. We did the shell design, moment frame for that. I continued to teach during that time and was a lecturer at USF for about 10 years. But I got my start at Berkeley and really loved being a graduate student instructor there as well as went on to be a lecturer there and at Stanford. In recent years, and am I going on too long? You can cut me off, but...
It's a second year.
Okay. And I'll just say, in recent years, the education component for me has been actually education management. So, I hire and train and supervise instructors for these wonderful enrichment courses that we put on in the summer on Stanford campus. And I kind of joined that when I started teaching these workshops and loved it so much that the small team created a position where I could come on and think about, "How do we bring together design, engineering, and architecture and product design in a design-thinking institute?" And it's a lovely position to be on, so, and I guess I just, I want to come back and do something for Palo Alto and this seemed like the right channel, so that's why I'm here today.
It's nice to see you again.
Yes.
So, when we were doing the library work, you were on the ARB and my kids were about that age in this very room, sitting in the back when we had library meetings. I wonder if you could tell us one thing that you thought worked really well when you served on the ARB?
Yeah.
And one thing that you found frustrating or that would be helpful.
Okay. So, one thing that worked really well, well, there were many things that worked very well and I think that I was lucky to be on the board long enough where there was diversity in terms of the board members, in terms of expertise. I would say that was very positive. I, you know, I was not somebody that detailed buildings, for example. I was somebody much more on the front end in terms of client and educating per planning regulations and understanding the context and analysis. I think that also I brought the perspective of landscape architecture, which was helpful because at that time, it was more straight architects and there was later a planner joined. But I think that's intentional in terms of City Palo Alto actually thinking about having some design expertise as well as being open to community members. So, I think that's a positive. And then, something that needed improvement, perhaps, and maybe this is something that you incur in your meetings, is that sometimes the meetings go quite long and it really puts, I think, applicants at a disadvantage as well as the board in terms of our clear thinking, our sharpness and our ability to listen in a way that is empathetic and also honest. I think that those quick decisions that happen because everybody is so hungry for lunch and it's going till 1:30 or 2:00 and nobody wants to say, "Let's go to a..." Maybe a subcommittee would be appropriate here because you want to do your utmost. So, that definitely is a hard one. I'm not sure, that's a hard nut to crack because sometimes the queue for projects that come along, you really don't want to waste time. You want them to come through. I hope that answers your question.
Hi. Thanks for applying.
Sure.
To kind of follow up on Allison's question, kind of two quick questions. One, did you guys ever vote no on a project when you were in the ARB?
Sorry, did we ever?
Vote no or vote against a project and then...
Oh, yes. Let me think back. It was unusual. Usually, there were chances, there were three tries, right? So, there was an opportunity for the applicant to improve their design and their package. I'm sorry, why don't you go to the second part and I'll think...
Well, the second one was, you know, it was about anything of interest that's come to the ARB recently.
Sure.
You mentioned some projects, but you didn't really say what was interesting about...
Oh, yeah. And so, well, let me answer the first one and I'm so sorry, but my memory does not recall one that was, we didn't, we did vote no. Now, that might have been a housing project that was half-baked and I think it was, we wouldn't have voted no for a preliminary. So, maybe we haven't, we didn't vote no. It doesn't occur that often.
Right.
That we vote no. We tried to scaffold and assist, but there were times when it was a near miss, that it was an almost no.
Okay.
Let's say that, yeah.
And there were a couple of projects in El Camino. What's interesting to you about that?
Yes, yes, and I apologize because I looked at my application and I realized there was a few typos and the address on one that I put was 2705, I believe it's 3705. And the first one that I mentioned was Ming's, the restaurant. It's something that came to the ARB during my time a while back and it came as a different use. It was a hotel and now it is the auto dealership. And, you know, for me, I guess I wrote also in there, that one as well as the other two on El Camino are on some major corridors where the context is really important and those are also, the first one, Ming's, is a very large parcel and it's a very difficult one to problem-solve for. Let's just say that, partly because of the zoning, but also the size and access points. And it's something that I remember spending a lot of time and just trying to figure out, "How could you do that vehicular access in a way that actually makes sense per the program?" And so, I haven't looked at the package very, kind of, in a very detailed way, but I'd be curious to look at that one a little bit more. The other two, El Camino, I believe, one is neighborhood commercial, one's service, I think, one CN, one CS. And again, those are challenging sites with so much potential, I think, in terms of being a resource to community, but also a neighborhood amenity, perhaps thinking about some larger challenges for the region. So, I guess for those reasons. And then, also, my start was really, I mean, I was working on boulevards and so, my first project was in Macon, Georgia, and it was a downtown project of three main streets that were underutilized and there was a bus line that didn't work. And, I mean, and so, I guess I've always been very interested in public corridors.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Three quick things.
Sure.
When were you on the ARB?
Yes.
I want to do it again.
Yes.
Microphone.
Oh, yes.
When were you on?
Okay.
Why do you want to do it again? And you mentioned your daughter's school and a four-year master plan.
Yes. Okay. So, the first...
Any order.
Yeah, I can do it in that order. I believe that the dates were 2005 to about 2011 or 2010 and it was the time when Ken Cornberg was back there, Judith Wasserman, David, I'm just forgetting his last name, but it was, it was, and I think I served when multiple members or two or three members came in and out. It was far enough where I feel like it was at a time when I didn't know Palo Alto as well as I know now. And so, that might lead to the answer to number two in terms of knowing the context a little bit better and also feeling more invested or having a broader perspective. And so, that's probably why I'm here. I also do want to do something that is, I feel like designers, architects, educators are people who can contribute and give back and communicate and be helpful. And so, I want to be helpful. I think this might be a good way to be helpful.
Your daughter's school?
Yes. So, that, it is a school where all my family members go. I think we have seven kids, cousins and everybody. And, you know, I did invest about four and a half years in working on a master plan and...
What school is it?
This is the Nueva School. It is in Hillsboro. They have actually another school campus, which is an upper school in San Mateo. And so, I did work on both campuses. Makes sense. I could help with finding architects. I also could think about what that master plan updated, a general plan amendment is about.
Thank you. I guessed it was Nueva.
Yeah.
But I just thought I would ascertain.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
We're going to push up against the limits of our timeframe here. Either of you folks want to do anything?
Seems time is kind of tight. I just want to say thank you for applying.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So, what we'll do is if you maybe take 30 seconds or something like that, if you want to say anything and wrap up, then we'll thank you for coming in and...
Sure. Well, I just want to thank you for your service. It's a big job and it's a lot of your time and some of it you've been doing for a long time. So, thank you so much. And I do watch you on Channel 16, 26.
You must have trouble sleeping.
I'm an early bird, so it doesn't quite work all the time, but thank you again.
Thank you very much for coming in.
I broke my mic.
There you go.
Hello. Yeah, I know, you're good. Thanks. Gentle. Okay, everybody ready?
I like this tone.
Is Amy there?
Yes. She's not in the area. She wants to hear. Perhaps we can move on to Curtis Smoller and then we could come back to Amy. Is she here? She was here, but she's not in the hallway.
She may be at the X camp.
Sure.
Hi, welcome. Sorry for the layout here. We don't normally do this. Usually, a little lower key than this is, but so, it's a little weird for us, too. What we're going to do is, we've got 10 minutes.
Yeah.
And so, what we're going to ask you to do is take a minute or two and sort of talk about your interest in this and background and how those things match and then we're going to ask you all kinds of really hard questions, right? And then, we're going to, we'll get back here.
Okay.
So, first of all, but thank you for being interested in doing this and for coming in tonight.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it. And my name is Kurt Smoller. I'm a lawyer. I've been practicing land use law for the past 20 years. I spent the majority of my time in San Francisco, dealing with neighbor disputes, everything from, you know, landlot lines, fences, trees, architectural design impact on buildings that butt each other, attached, unattached, any kind of building situation you can think of, I dealt with. I dealt with nudists that didn't want to put up screens to, you know, light wells that people then, you know, thought, you know, intruded on their, on the, you know, on the shadows of their building. We had to do light studies on the adjoining buildings. We, you know, had to talk about how big and bulky and what the character of the neighborhood is and how everything fits together. And I did that in San Francisco until about 2013, when I moved down here for the wonderful weather and schools for my kids. Were they... and how those things match. And then we're gonna ask you all kinds of really hard questions, right? And then, and then, and then we're gonna, we'll get back here.
Okay.
So first of all, but thank you for, thank you for being interested in doing this and for coming in tonight.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it. And, uh, uh, my name is Kurt Smoller. I'm a lawyer. I've been practicing, uh, land use law, uh, for the past twenty years. I spent the majority of my time in San Francisco, uh, dealing with neighbor disputes, uh, everything from, uh, you know, uh, landlot, uh, lines, fences, trees, uh, architectural design, uh, impact on, on, on buildings that butt each other, attached, unattached, any kind of building, uh, sort of situ- uh, situation you can think of, I dealt with. Um, I dealt with nudists that didn't want to put up screens, uh, to, uh, you know, light wells that people then, you know, uh, did, you thought, you know, intruded on their, uh, on, on the, you know, on the shadows of their building. We had to do light studies on the, the adjoining buildings. Um, we, you know, had to talk about how big and bulky and what the character of the neighborhood is and how everything fits together. And I did that in San Francisco until about twenty thirteen, when I moved down here, uh, for the wonderful, uh, weather and, uh, schools for my kids. Uh, you know, they, they love, you know, uh, going to school here and I really enjoy being part of the community. And I've really enjoyed, uh, the ability to, uh, live here in, in one of those beautiful places on earth near one of the, you know, most amazing universities on the planet. Uh, and, uh, and I really wanted to see how I could help out. And in fact, last, I did come and, uh, come in before you once before on the same, yeah. And, uh, at, at that, uh, David Hirsch, who's on the board, said that, you know, I, well, you know, we have, we have a lawyer on the board. Well, now you don't. So, so, uh, and, and I'm the only lawyer who's on the list. Uh, just, just a little plug for myself there. Um, but, uh, basically, uh, I do think having a lawyer on the board is important. And I think the reason why it's important is that, uh, architects will, two arc, two very good architects can disagree about the same issue, uh, fifteen different ways. And, uh, a lawyer is gonna look at it more along the lines of how is this going to fit with the codes? And how can we make sure that the law is being followed? And if you end up in situations where lawyers have to become involved, what's an appropriate amount to pay lawyers? And what is the best way to control outside counsel and those, those kind of issues? So I, I do think, and I, I, you know, give myself a little pat on the back here, but I do think that having a lawyer on a board is, is good.
Anyone's ever come to us and said, I'm valuable because I'm a lawyer. Um, it's, that's, it's got merit. So I, I'm interested in your exploring that a little more. Can you come up with a time when you can think of, you mentioned something in here, um, when you would have said, I might have helped them through this and come out with a different decision?
So, yeah, so I've done that numerous times. What I've, what, what I would do?
Anything locally that you've noticed or are you going to talk about, you know, in the background? Either is fine.
So, I mean, it, it's, it's up to you. I can, I can focus on either locally or?
If you've got a local one, that would be good.
So, um, trees, that's a good example. I've talked to a lot of people about trees. That's about historic trees and those issues. I've dealt with, uh, the question, a, a good example, actually, um, I don't even want to bring this up because of what's, it's gonna, of, of the reaction from, of y'all, is that, um, Castelaya, I've been following that a lot. And that's been a really interesting, uh, issue and the, the permitting issue and the impact of, you know, that, of that school and what's going on. I don't want to go into it because I don't want to, you know, start a, a whole thing. But, you know, I've been following that and I think that that's a situation where you have a lot of, a lot of different points of view, all of which that are valid, but you have the fact that you have, and the, the fact that they're in a neighborhood that's a residential neighborhood and you have a historic school there. So how do you balance the two? And how do you say, okay, this is not necessarily an architectural, this is, this is an architectural issue, but it's also a planning issue. And how do, you know, how would, you know, how could the rules that are already in place be applied in this situation so that every, that you come to a, a solution that is the right solution? And so I don't know if that is, answers your question, but I think it, and I really didn't want to get into like, I know it's a hot button issue, so I didn't want to?
It answers it sufficiently.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you very much.
So in your mind, in, in, in your sort of perspective, what kinds of things make one project better than another one? From an ARB standpoint?
Not to sound, you know, not to sound, uh, uh, I guess the word's postmodern, but i- i- it's the context, right? Uh, you know, it's, the question is, is not the, uh, is not if one is inherently better than the other. It's how do you fit things into something that already exists? And, you know, you don't want something to be too big and too bulky and out of character. That's what you don't want. Uh, what you want is something to be in the character of the, um, of the neighborhood while still, you know, while still ga- getting the result that people want, but not necessarily exactly how they want it. And I think, you know, uh, that when I did mediations, they would always say, you know that you have a good, uh, a good deal when everybody's unhappy, right? Uh, because, so that, that is, I don't mean to say that I want anyone to be unhappy, but I think that, you know, I think that that is just kind of true. It's like, you know, you, you look at one pers- you know, one group wants one thing and another group wants another thing. Well, how do you, how do you resolve them? You have to, uh, resolve them in a way that is best for the community. So that's, uh, I think that might, I said, there's no objective truth to that. I think that you have to look at the context.
So have you watched a recent ARB meeting?
Uh, I haven't watched a recent one because I didn't know if there were, because I was, I, I thought that since, um?
Do you remember seeing, uh, you did see one before?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've, I've watched them before.
And do you, can you comment on kind of the project they were discussing and kind of what you thought about it?
Um?
If it was too long ago, I can ask you a different question.
It's not too long ago. I'm just getting old, so I forget things. Um, so I apologize. So, um, uh, I, I, so, um, I, I don't recall exactly. Um, but, uh, if you want to point me in a certain specific thing, I can address an issue.
Also, are you, what is your current practice? Are you still doing land use?
No, actually I'm not. Right now I am actually in-house at a, a private equity firm doing something different. Um, so that's another reason why I'm here, is that I really enjoy the land use, uh, work and I don't get to do it in my daytime job.
It sounds like you wouldn't have conflicts then, right?
No.
Yeah.
No, I mean, that's, that's actually another thing, is that I don't really, I don't, I'm not practicing. I don't have a practice right now. Uh, so, um, you know, that's, that, that is another thing. So, and I have a lot more flexibility also to be here and, uh, and, and do, and do work.
Thanks.
Thank you for applying. Um, just one thing you mentioned was kind of interesting to me that you'd like to see the board continue to focus on the merits of both project versus procedural issue, i.e. completeness of application. Then you also mentioned, you know, increase the public's trust with ARB. So I guess a, a two-part question is, one, you know, do you think there's a trust issue with ARB and kind of what is that? And the second big piece is, how do you communicate that kind of style to the public, right? How do you tell them, like, hey, we have a meritorious project here and it may not meet all of our procedures? How would you go about that?
Those are great questions. The first question is, is there a trust issue? I don't think there is a trust issue. I think that there was, uh, I think that in around four years ago, when I first moved down here, there was a lot, there was, it was a little tumultuous, if I remember correctly. And there was a little bit of, of movement at the, in the, at the ARB. And, uh, it related, my rec- my recollection is related to a hotel project, uh, and there was a certain issues that came up. And I, you know, I, I don't want to, you know, go back into that, that whole thing. But I think that the idea here is that, you know, we live in, uh, in a, in a, uh, an, an amazing place. And I think that people have, I think that it's really important to have the, um, political capital to say to people that we're not just going to reject this because, you know, you didn't give the fifty-four slash thirty form for this specific project. The point is, you know, have people come in and present their projects and if they are the right size in the character of the neighborhood and they're not too bulky, then you, you do it. And then you look at variances and you look at variances in, in context with, with each one. And again, you know, I think that there is, I don't think there's a trust issue, but I do think in this, you know, in this time, you have certain issues, uh, some of which unfortunately I've discussed, which are a little bit, uh, polarizing. And the idea is to show that, you know, that the, um, that the city is listening and that, that they can come to the city and that they will get a fair shake regardless of, you know, whether or not they have the procedure right. And just, you know, growing up as a, you know, a baby lawyer to now, uh, you know, you look at it and you're like, oh my God, I didn't file something and now the whole thing's messed up, right? Um, and, and, you know, it, it just, it just makes you think sometimes that it's the form over substance i- i- in that sense. So, uh, I think, I don't know if that answers the first question, but that's? Oh, okay. So, yeah, so that's, 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 that's my hope. My hope is to be transparent and to work with the community and have it be a, a, a cooperative, uh, relationship. And I, I just want to thank you and, uh, you know, again, you know, lawyers are good, you know, so, uh, so you should choose one. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you for, thank you for applying and thanks for coming in and, and, and taking an evening and coming in and talking to us. So, um, what we're gonna do is, uh, we're gonna ask you to talk for a minute or two about sort of, you know, uh, this board and, uh, you know, so your interest in this and background and how it fits together. And then we're gonna, we're gonna ask you questions for a little while and then we'll, we'll ask you to wrap up real briefly. And, uh, so sorry about the layout of the room here. Usually we do this around a much smaller table. It's a lot more intimate, but, but all the other rooms are full, so we're using this one today, so it's, it's a little unusual. So, sorry for the layout here.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
My name is, uh, Sri Chawla. Uh, my educational background is, I'm electrical engineer and I'm also MBA. I worked almost forty years in semiconductor industry. I worked in marketing and sales. Uh, for the last ten years, I have been managing a real estate portfolio. We have five commercial buildings of various sizes. And I've been dealing with, um, various issues with, with the building, like, um, architectural designs and so forth. So with all my experience, I think I can contribute and I would enjoy it very much.
Okay, um, thanks very much. So, you want to start?
Okay.
So this is gonna sound a little odd, but we have somebody else who worked in the semiconductor industry and sometimes our mayor speaks about, you know, the architecture of chips and like, how do you do that? Manufacturing and sales and lithography. And I'm just wondering if you see any connections there between the industry? If you see any, any connections actually between the industry, uh, the semiconductor field that you worked in for forty years and the work of the ARB? What, what, what's similar? What, what experiences do you think will map over well?
Semiconductor chips also have a architectural design, but that is very different on a different level. The design of the buildings of various sizes, from homes to commercial buildings to manufacturing facilities, have a different issues involved with the designs. And it should meet various standards, uh, along with the, uh, designs and thought process of the city where it is and the people living in that city.
Has your, has your, has your, uh, experience in real estate ever sort of brought you into the sphere of the architectural rules and, and, uh, standards and so forth in Palo Alto in the last decade?
Yes, time to time.
Talk, talk about that.
Um, I have had issues with my some buildings which are in Palo Alto. So I have been coming regularly for many, many years, in and out and getting the issues resolved.
Thank you for applying. Um, you named a couple of buildings that you thought was, uh, good examples of architecture, the Visa and the Samaya Yoga Center. Can you give me an idea of what is, what you thought was good architecture in that? And then also if you would be able to kind of give me an idea of what your thoughts are about Lucy Stern Community Center, its architecture?
Very good question. Uh, I was very influenced with the Samaya Yoga Building. So I thought that my portfolio should have one of these buildings. I'm so sorry. This, let me disconnect. I must have one of these buildings. So I contacted the architect of, and the people who built that. So I visited, I had negotiations going on. I asked various questions about that building. I visited the building. So it was on my agenda. And second, Visa Building, very recent. I was in touch with the builders and I was also in touch with the architects. So it is one of the fantastic design, I would call, of the building and the location. And I can see the financials of that building, that it sold for a very high price because of that. And because of these reasons, Visa chose to occupy that building.
Well, I could ask, I could ask something about, um, sorry, I didn't turn this on. Again, thanks for applying. Um, you're on the Board of Trustees for AAPIO, which has to do with the physicians of Indian origin. Just curious how, whether you simply wanted to show us the involvement you have in the community? Or does that have something to do with the ARB that I might not have read into it?
Interesting question. It would need a little bit of time and you'll be very happy to hear about it. AARP means American Association of Physicians of Indian Origin. I'm engineer by background, so about ten, fifteen years ago, I encountered that I had a serious heart problem which needed open heart bypass surgery. I did not like the idea of surgery because of it's so serious. And from my friends who had gone through the surgery, I found they were different people. They didn't have the energy and they were again and again going back to a doctor. So I kept looking for solutions and I found solution that we, human beings can change our health. Very serious problems we can change. So I went that, I changed my lifestyle, I changed my diet completely. With the result, in one year, that disease disappeared. When I went to doctors, they could not believe that this is possible and it is possible. Then I, I spoke to some experts at Stanford. They wanted me to become an example and oper- in, participate in a research they were doing. I said, that's, it would be wonderful. At least slowly and slowly I became a speaker. So this AARP people, which is the Association of Two Hundred Medical MD Doctors, research scientists, professors at Stanford and other places. They approached me if I would be their Board of Trustee, even though I'm not a doctor. And I became their Board of Trustee and they enjoy having me, having me. So I do communicate with not only doctors, but also patients. We have various conferences on health and it is possible to reverse all diseases, including the most difficult cancer. If I can answer any more questions in that respect.
That's, might be one of the more important pieces of information we've gotten tonight. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you very much.
One more and then we're gonna have to wrap, which is, um, in your mind, what's, I mean, for an architecture, the Architecture Review Board looks at a lot of projects.
I'm sorry?
The Architecture Review Board looks at a lot of proposed projects. In your mind, what's, what, what are the differences between a good project and a not so good project? What makes one better than another? How do, how do you feel about that?
Good project in someone's mind like me, who's not involved, is different. Good project in somebody who is going to give permit, it's a different things. What city wants, what the neighbors want, it all mixture of all this. So I could not sit here and I can say that this would be a good project. Good project is one which is appealing, which matches the, all other properties nearby. It is not, suppose there is a neighborhood which is a particular style and all of a sudden in between neighborhoods, some property pops up which is very different. So that's a good idea. I would say not very good idea, but it should match the entire street, entire community. And this would apply to the houses also, that houses should be some uniformity in the structure and height and colors and various patterns.
So I think we're about out of time. Do you want to? Take a second and wrap, uh, and say anything in conclusion or we're?
I was sitting outside thinking, how would I close?
[laughing]
I want to assure you that I work with passion. I work with happiness, and I work with commitment in anything I do. I solve complex problems. I don't get distressed. I work happiness. And I do solve the problems, even though many things I don't know, and I know for the first time. I try to find it, what is the solution for it, and I find solution.
Super. Thank you very much for applying.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
For giving me opportunity.
We're gonna talk some, and we're gonna-
Thank you.
And we'll be in touch.
What night do we vote?
I actually do not know. Hey, Kim, do you know which night we can, we review these?
September ninth is a proposed date.
Okay, so-
I think that the report will be canceled.
So we'll, we'll make a decision on September ninth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
She wasn't there.
Yeah.
I looked around as much as I could without disturbing anyone.
Did you look in the bathroom?
She was here. She was here. She did show up. She was here right up to Grace. Did she lose her mind? You know, I hope not. But she, although she didn't show up for the interview, she is still considered, so you can vote however you choose.
Which, which is that?
X cap CMR.
The last date.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. It's the NV cap that's there now. The X cap was in the CMR from four to six, and then they moved the X cap from the CCR to the CMR, and that meeting is gonna happen from six till about nine. That doesn't make your head turn.
Yeah.
No, just the X cap and the NV cap back to back in the CMR. Yeah. Yes, we held that room open so that the, after the X cap was over, since the NV cap had a, had to begin right at six, we left the CCR open, so the X cap could have time to deliberate after their meeting. Yeah. Advisory, uh, the Citizen Police Academy. Yeah, in the chambers. We're full.
I think we're about to execute.
Nope. She knew we were here, right? Especially if she saw us. Okay, are we adjourned?
We are adjourned.
Okay, six fifty?